Let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Mr. Cross.
Copy the revised naming rights agreement. Brad's going to be talking with him. I don't guess he's had.
Right, right.
The only issue that I see is one kind of left open. The main thing is the signage and that's a function of. I don't know what the design of the signage is. I think we want to do anything more than just.
I don't think we've heard anything about what kind of sign they're thinking about. So.
I did get a printout this morning from the auditor. Thank you, Mark. And I have an itemization of all expenditures out of the 4600 account. Subspent in July, one of 2020. So I'm going to give you. It works. It's just a listing of expenses. But I mean, there are major projects I think we can identify by vendors. We see Carol or Thorbier.
This is on the jail project.
In jail so we can get the joint resolution passed because State Department of Accounts asked Mark to have that done and I told him I would. I'm sure it's necessary, but easier to comply.
I guess if they say it is, then it is.
If they say it is.
Do what we can. Okay, great. Nothing else from on your side?
Not really. I tried. I did try to get on vacation last week, sort of. Are they recommend a football hall thing? You can't go. I'll recommend that to anybody.
I've never been there. Never been there.
My wife's more of a football fan than I am. Just a witness by her success in our fantasy. That's all.
All right. Steve.
I told the folks here we can talk about the deed sale first so they can.
Let's do that.
Get out.
It's Friday.
Yeah, it's the deed sale. So I guess the question, who's doing what and when?
I mean, the main thing is getting the pre-registration and the collection of the registration.
And the treasurer's office says that they cannot hold checks. So they.
For a matter of hours?
Correct.
You can't hold money you don't intend to receive.
Any length of time. And so.
They get paid by checks all the time.
They're intended all to be received.
Pardon?
They're intended all to be received. So if someone were to pay a deposit that we then had to refund, if it was never received in the first place, we can't do that. We can't hold. You can't hold money like that.
This is government action.
So in other words, if you took a check.
So in other words, you can't hold a check and give it back to them.
You would have to deposit.
Right. I can't, I can't hold it and then automatically just immediately give it back to you.
You could deposit it and then write them a refund check.
Right. We could receipt it and then claim it out.
You laid on your desk.
Could I receipt it and just void the receipt?
Not legally. Not if you don't intend to receive it, like.
I mean, it's just holding.
As far as I'm aware, no.
It's not intended as a payment. It's intended as security.
Yeah.
So that makes no sense.
So.
But that's the State Department of Accounts.
We can do that.
We can?
We will. Auditor's office can hold it?
We'll deposit it.
And if they don't buy anything, we give it back to them?
Well, I didn't. Actually, I thought we'd hold it.
Okay.
Not the treasurer.
We'll work that out because I think she's right. We can deposit it and then cancel it.
As long as it were to come. Well, I can accept the receipt if you immediately intend to void it. But if you were to hold it and then send it over with their quietus for payment, we could do that.
Yeah.
If you didn't automatically just receive them all.
No, I was going to.
We'll work that out with the treasurer.
Say that again.
She's just going to issue a receipt, void the receipt.
Right.
If it doesn't happen and then.
Or hold them. You can hold them.
The kicker will be if they give you $500 and they buy.
We can hold the money without the receipt.
Pardon?
We can, and our office can hold the money without the receipt.
Right.
They aren't allowed to.
Okay.
So what I would do is if they purchase, we'll put that 500 towards their purchase. If not, they get their money back or check back.
They get the check back and then if they have given you a $500 check, then we buy two $100 properties, you don't have to cash it then.
You don't even have to put it in.
No, we don't.
We'll just give it back to them at the end of the sale.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So on the day of the sale, this is an extra step that they'll go through.
Yeah, it'd be an extra step.
Where will you be then? Where would you collect this?
It's after the sale we collect it. Well, they, they come to our office for the quietus.
But he's talking about to give the $500. Where will you be? Are you going to be in here or are you going to have to move to your office to register?
Where's the sale?
The sale's right here.
You're going to be here.
Should take it here. Should take it here because I'm usually in here anyway.
So you'll take their payment. Could be cash, could be a check.
Yeah.
Could be a money order, could be.
Normally, the registration is done by an SRI person. So this is going to make it a little different.
It always is.
And they're in here.
And they're in here and they're taking.
They'll be right up there in the corner.
So but you're going to have to be involved in that.
Yeah.
This year because of the paddle fee or registration.
Sure.
So you'll be sitting by her probably.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
My buyer. I won't let anything pass me.
You better believe that.
Have a sign to that effect.
I hear everything doing that.
Well, I'd make the announcement. I mean, you know, the people, it's been in the legal.
It's an end of the sale if you don't buy anything.
Yeah.
For us, just we'll just get all of our information.
Yeah.
That's a better idea.
We won't be all just straight. That's why we still do it.
Totally. The auditor is going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, it's easier for.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We got it worked out.
So you understand what you need to do on Friday?
Oh, God.
And this will probably not be what we do in the tax sale because there's a statute on the paddle fee maximum that we're exceeding. I think it's about 25 bucks or something.
I'd take that too if you want to.
And the reason that these properties that were sold to deed sale, they're also on the tax sale list.
Yes, they will be until.
Unless we sell them, then we pull, then they'll be taken off that.
Then they will be taken off.
We couldn't get them pulled before they advertise that.
If they weren't to sale, you want them to advertise in this sale so you can send them back through that process.
Yeah, it's easier to pull them at the last minute.
Well, they didn't need to be in the tax sale to get away. They're already in the name of the commissioner so we wouldn't be having a deed sale.
Yeah. But the taxes that were previously owed are still there until after the sale when I receive the money and pay towards what I can and then civee the rest of them off.
Well, if you don't sell them, the commissioners own them. You have to take them off by.
I take them off anyway, yes. But I'm just saying though that they're out of the tax sale now because the money's still on there.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying.
Now, this is done by a quitclaim deed? And not a warranty deed?
Everything's by quitclaim deed.
Okay. I've already been chewed out about that.
One of the people, one of the two people that bought at the actual sale, she's very upset with this. So let's just leave it at that. We won't go into all she said. Just leave it at that.
Going to get an attorney. Go ahead. I don't care.
Somebody bought it at the sale?
Yeah, she lives in Georgia.
Two, two of the women, two women.
But I thought they paid for it.
They did pay for it and they got, she got her deeds. She expected to get a tax.
A warranty deed.
A tax deed. She got the commissioner's quitclaim deed that goes to the, from the, I said, well, it's because there's different, it's not a tax sale, it's a commissioner deed sale.
Different statutes.
The nice one took the explanation really well. The one that's the angry meaning is she didn't take it well.
Have either of them recorded their, their.
Yeah, they both have gotten their deeds.
I know. Have they recorded them?
We record them before they go out.
We record them before they go out.
Yeah. That's why, because we don't want to go out and then not get, take care of.
Yeah, you've been there, yeah.
You've been there, done that?
Sounds like we're learning.
Eventually.
Slowly.
Is the nice one mowing your property?
I don't know that. She's in Chicago, I think.
Yeah, that was in Georgia.
We might need, and I need the information number one, we're pulling out, sell to the buddy.
Yeah, you got that pulled, that we were selling to a buddy property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else we need then?
Just luck. I don't think, there's not been any issues had there lately.
Not that I'm aware of.
Just our friendly colors.
Except trying to keep the properties moved.
Yeah.
And keeping the peace that we've made.
Been several thousand dollars in the property.
Are we doing it or setting that up?
I had to shut down. Got to bring the price on, but we'll go to about.
You're done with this?
Okay, I think it sounds pretty simple. So Friday morning, let's get rocking, right?
We will.
How many we got? 13 persons?
I think it ended up twelve or thirteen. Thirteen, yeah. Because we took that one off.
That'd be lucky.
How many had improvements though? Not very many.
About six.
Six for this.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty close to being even.
It was about six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ten o'clock, right?
Ten o'clock.
Can you hear a little early?
Yeah, yeah. Selena, can you be here early?
Yes, sir. I'm here 10:30, so I'll be here.
Okay, that'll be awesome.
What time do you reckon SRI will be here?
I think he should get here eight or so.
Okay, okay.
I'm always pacing, waiting for him to come in, so I'll catch him.
I'll be pacing with you.
Will you? Okay. We'll get him.
The property or something is okay.
Because we're ready to rock, huh?
Ten o'clock.
I hope we have some more participation because I feel that, I feel bad that these should have.
I do too.
But you know why? I think most of them ended up understanding after they heard the circumstances.
I don't feel as bad as I would have if one of, one of the locals got stuck with a $500,000 property. And I'm hopeless worried that that was going to happen.
Well, fortunately, the locals were pretty savvy.
Well, there was one admitting hundreds of thousands. Okay.
All right. List of projects. The first one is the courthouse exterior. As you can probably see, they moved exclusively over here to the east side. They still are thinking this year with the latest I've gotten.
Okay.
But again, depends on when the weather changes. The, the NX generator, I'm sorry, not the NX, the courthouse bathrooms, they've indicated that they probably will be done. They're waiting on, they're still waiting on a couple of ADA pieces for the third floor bathroom. They thought they'd be in this week, but they're looking at finishing that project up in about 30 days. So we'll have our punch list walkthrough on that.
So the first and second floors are done?
Yeah, they're done. There's a couple of trim pieces, but they're in use. But there's some pieces of equipment that, you know, like, so much that's still got to be replaced.
Okay.
But they are in use. Jeff, you talked to the technology guy in this, built in this room.
Yes.
While I was on vacation.
I did.
I think he's indicating September sometime.
The additional set of microphones for this area, we're going to move this one closer this way and put another one out that way. He indicated that those, that that should be in, he should receive it by the middle of this month, middle of September.
Were you here?
Now, he did not say.
Yeah.
When he would commit to installing it. He just said that he would have it. So we need to nail him down on that. Then the other thing that I think we need to follow up on is we had talked about another small set of microphones right above the podium and I think we ought to follow through with that because there's, there's still an issue with, with picking up sound from the, from the speaker at the podium.
And then did he say anything about that control box?
He did and he was talking to a couple of our IT guys and they were working through some things and they were, and they were talking about when they would be able to sit down and go through a formalized training process. I think we need to have at least a couple of people in this building trained on how to work that so that we don't have to rely on IT guys to come over every time we need to turn off the microphone.
And then the EMA ramp flooring, that has been completed. We fixed the, sealed the windows above it for the water was leaking in, so we'll wait until the next rain.
And it's not the window itself, it's the frame?
Yeah, it's the seal around the window.
Okay.
And so they caulked silicone, all that down from the top down.
Okay.
And, and then the judge's, Circuit Court Judge's office security, that starts the 16th of October. I did, in fact, we received today their product list where we look at, you know, the handles that we use and the hardware on the door, the door design. It'll be a white oak door that'll be stained similar to the rest of the courthouse doors.
Great.
So it'll be, it'll be similar appearance.
Architect, aesthetically compatible with the building. Great.
Yeah, yeah. And then the First Bank Expo Hall HBAC product is starting to be delivered. In fact, we got our first pay app of material that's been delivered. So they should be starting on that, I think, probably before it runs out.
Okay.
And then remember there was a project.
I think that'll be completed before the heating season.
No. I don't think so. But remember, they don't have to disconnect the term one because the others will be now inside.
Inside and outside.
So we won't lose many days.
So it should be maybe a week or so when they switch over.
But when they actually do the switch over, because they can do the total installation before they switch over to the, so you shouldn't be without.
No, but you'll, will still be without being able to hear yourself make until, until they switch it over.
And then remember the, the project of putting monitors up in the courthouse for court information.
Right.
Showing, you've got all those monitors and our staff ran the electric and the colder cable and now IT and probation or program. I'm not involved in that, so we'll see when those. But if you look at it, they did a pretty good job of integrating the wire in existing surface mount conduit because, you know, that's block wall.
Right, right.
And so we used existing and it really looks pretty nice. And it's painted the same color as the wall, so unless you're just staring at it. And obviously you got the parking lot done out here.
I thought they did a nice job.
Yeah, Mike, Mike did a good job. And, yep. And it's going to, going to end up being about $6,000 for that, which really would be pretty decent. And so we'll have this, that part striped and we'll do that same time to do the Fourth Street parking lot, striping and sealing as the US bank lot before we do all those at the same time.
And you think we'll be able to get that done before, before winter?
So.
Okay.
Including the shrinkage of the sidewalk on the east side of Fourth Street? You're going to have to make the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't think.
No, that.
I would get that done.
So you're going to stripe before you do the sidewalk shrinkage?
Yeah. So that, that.
That's a big project.
That'll be a major.
Okay, so you're going to stripe.
We're going to stripe the, the west side as emergency vehicle. And then the east side will actually be angle parking, albeit it's short, but it'll be angle parking for emergency vehicles.
You know, it's not that bad until cars meet right. You know, the passage of two cars is.
Well, or if you got a, a long bed truck, you've seen some of those stick out.
Or the jail transport van.
Yeah, but it's been manageable. But, yeah, we could get that important.
Okay, because I was afraid the sidewalk was going to hold up a little bit. Oh, good, good.
And I think that's it.
You know, I, there are quite a few angular parking spaces on the east side of Fourth Street. And although, yeah, I don't know how many, maybe seven, six, seven, eight, I don't know. It's quite a lot of parking for.
And if you look down there, it's full and albeit there's been construction people parked here too.
Right. Civilian cars.
And, and to your point, that's going to be my holdup to get those dumpsters out of there before we can seal that. And if they can face that up, like they say they're going to face, then those dumpsters will go away.
Okay.
But they can start sealing this lot and striping this lot first.
Right, okay.
I guess my question on that east side, just how often do we really have that many public safety vehicles needing all those spaces there on the east side?
It's remarkable how many there's been parked there when, when there are trials.
Right. It's pretty rare.
Even Superior Three would, you know, protested citations, the arresting officer needs to appear or.
Yeah, and he needs to park those.
And if there's two or three that day, there's cars parked there.
And the overlap, okay. We just hadn't had that conversation, but knowing when it's striped and when it's enforced, I, there are going to be an awful lot of empty spaces on throughout the state, is my point.
Hopefully it ends up with empty spaces. Now, tell us that trials are diminished.
You know, we can always, we can always rearrange things.
Always to put up a, a couple of signs as visitors.
You know, if we, if we get to do that sidewalk project, we'll know pretty well by then. We can use some of those for public parking.
Yeah, and it's easily solved by just button up a visitor's sign.
Yep, yep. That's all I have, Jeff.
Okay.
Can we come back to the chamber for just a minute? I, I know that until it's finished, you can't clean that. Any prognosis on when that, what is, any update at all on it? Because, you know, it could at least be kind of cleaned up a little bit.
We'll, in September. We'll put the plate on. When we get.
Something.
When we get the technology completed, we'll be able to clear out some of the junk that's in the storage room and we'll be able to then move all the extra stuff into the storage room. But I think you're talking about.
Just cleaning it up a little bit, it's, it's so dirty and.
Oh, you, you're talking about the bulkhead.
The bulkhead.
Yeah.
You know, if we wait till it's perfect, it's going to be dirty for quite some time, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can just have them wipe it down.
Yeah. It calls attention to its flaws.
Just don't worry about it.
Well, if, if there weren't smudges on it, it wouldn't be as noticeable.
Maybe, maybe, maybe that's what we're seeing.
The smudges?
Really not.
Bubbles? Just smudges. Okay, but you'll take care of that.
You know, just a little wipe down, yeah.
Kind of guy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Where's she at?
You ready?
Is that the wellness council out there?
Yes.
Okay, bring them on in, please.
You ready? Anywhere. If there's any area, let us know.
Hello, everyone. Come on in.
Somebody, you can come over here if there's not enough chairs on that side. He comes to help me, see?
First of all, thank you very much for participating in the wellness council. We really appreciate it. Kim?
Well, first of all, I would like for you to know who's on the wellness council. So I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, their department, and how long they've been with the county so you have an idea. So we'll start with Becca.
Hi, Becca. I'm with health department and I've been on the wellness council and with the county since then. It's nice to see you guys.
I'm Tracy. I'm with the prosecutor's office, child support division. I've been with the county for almost three years and I've been with the wellness council for just maybe a couple of months.
Great, thank you.
I'm Joe. I've been with the county for 28 years full time and I've been on the council since you asked me.
When did you ask her?
Let's see, well, we started, I think, in March, but we started building it for April, May, yeah.
Kate Brown. I'm with probation and community corrections. I've been with the county for a little over three years now and I've been on it since, our first meeting was February 3rd.
I'm Sarah. I'm with the treasurer's office. I've been with the county for a little over two years and since the beginning with the wellness council.
So we've got a great group. I think they also helped out with the healthcare and helped out transitioning over on the platform and everything. So we wanted to come to you today because we, with what's happened with Reed and that situation on the wellness department, we've been talking and with Ron with legal, we actually had an opportunity to participate in a demo with the new platform that they are proposing called Marquee Health. And so been working, we've had several meetings talking about it. So Kate Brown has volunteered to kind of be the spokesperson for the group and also with the recommendation of how the, and it's only a recommendation, but how we can move forward in this transition. So, oh, sorry. We have Renee.
Hi.
Highway, and how long have you been with the county?
Oh, gosh, almost 16, 17 years.
So she's on council, so, okay. Kate?
Before I start, first of all, thank you for allowing us as a wellness council to participate and have a say in what's affecting not only us but all the employees. And there are several members of the council that aren't here as well and I don't want to name names for fear I'll miss someone. I got the dubious honor of being the spokesperson here, so just to give you an idea of, of where we came from, Epic and the county, as you know, parted ways when Epic took over, ran from RMD Patty's beginning of the year and we were left with no wellness plan at all for the county. Kim and Pam organized the wellness council. We began meeting, as she said, the first week in February and we've met pretty much every few weeks since then, about an hour at a time or so, just to make sure that we're, we're staying on track. We spent a great deal of time discussing what we believed employees wanted in a wellness program. We presented Redeem Well as a platform to us and its designer, Twan, worked very closely with us to customize it and continue to grow it to meet our needs. He and Candace from Reed also continued to provide excellent service to us in terms of assisting employees who struggled with the technology, following up with us on our general satisfaction and basically being at our beck and call with questions and answers as needed. Candace recently reported to us that more employees are engaging with the wellness program than before, which was the goal of the county administration, I think, all along, was to promote and encourage wellness among all employees. Recently, due to the staff reduction, the process at Reed, Reed notified us that the wellness services could potentially end September 30th as the designer-owner of Redeem Well was no longer employed there and that was Twan. Reed was exploring options on their end. Conversations then took place between Redeem Well and Kim. As a result, Redeem Well gave us a proposal that they would continue to provide us with services without any disruption until the end, as long as we needed them actually. But that way our employees would have consistency. Reed then recently proposed their new platform through Marquee Health. The wellness council was privileged to be on a joint call with both Reed and a representative from Marquee to see firsthand what the new platform is all about. This new platform would not only provide the services we currently have, but expand them in several areas. As a council, we were very impressed by this new platform that they presented. Marquee advised a lead time of approximately six to eight weeks to get it up and running and customized for our needs. Reed indicated they could possibly rush it and at least get some basic level service up by October 1st. Wellness council spent time discussing various options and we are now making the following recommendation. We want to keep Redeem Well through December 31st of 2023 while working with Reed and Marquee to have the new platform ready to launch on January 1st, 2024. And here's why. We feel that rushing a new platform would not be fair to either Reed, Marquee, and especially not to the employees of Wayne County, as this would make our third platform in less than 12 months. Earlier this year, employees had to deal with the stress of the Dunn and Associates computer issues, which resulted in problems with claims, balances, et cetera, already a stressful situation. In addition, as you know, the new way we will be enrolling for benefits takes on a new challenge for employees as well, October 1st. And to change the wellness program at the same time would be more than slightly overwhelming. Our fear is that instead of gaining participants, we would lose participants due to, if nothing else, the frustration and the sense of, of being overwhelmed at the new process. We feel that keeping Redeem Well through the end of 2023 will allow for continuity and stability for the users of the current platform, as well as allow us time to make sure the new platform is built to meet our needs and be user-friendly, which is a high priority for us. We definitely appreciate all that Reed has done for us in the past and we're not at all trying to, to create any issues between, with our relationship with them. They've been a great community supporter and partnered with the county all along very well. We just feel that we need to take our time and do things right.
Thank you very much for that input. You all feel the same way?
Does anybody else have any additional words?
I think I should share with you that Kim and I talked sometime last week. She shared your concerns and why you had those concerns. I have been in touch with Jason Troutwine at Reed Health and expressed those concerns and our, our position that we'd like for them to look at. and expressed those concerns and our, our position that we'd like for them to look at an option that would allow us to stay on this platform through the end of the year, and then make the move in January to the new platform. And they are investigating whether that's possible, and if so, you know, how would that work? So there are both apparently some legal issues that they need to sort through, as well as, as process issues. But they're, they're more than willing, they hear our concerns, and they're more than willing to investigate and see whether they can accommodate us. So I will let them know as soon as we, as soon as we know more. And Mary Ann, I thought that was the best way to approach it, so. They seem genuinely concerned that they meet our needs as customers. And so I would anticipate a response here in the next week or so. We'll be able to evaluate where we're at and what we need to do to move forward. Kim, any?
I think the other thing I should add to that is, if I stayed with the same platform through the end of the year, you know, we have our employees earning well bucks, but those dollars are deposited into their HRA or HSA.
Right.
And I can see that being real muddy if we start doing this in October, which I still don't think is possible. I think it would be, in all fairness to all, is to close the year out on December 31st. And that part, the business side of it and the money side of it, makes a whole lot more sense than changing midstream almost.
And I have conveyed that to them, and we'll, we'll see what kind of response we get from them.
And then one more thing I'd like to say, because it's a great group of people. We, I'll be sending out an email, but it's already on the platform, that Reed did help us come up with a survey, an employee survey that's out there. And it's just to have, give us guidance on how we might get more participation for those. Especially, the Sheriff's Department targeted those. So there is a survey out, so it's a very proactive group of employees. So I did want to share that.
Results with us as they come in?
Yeah, electronic, so, yeah, we've got a great group of people.
Mary Ann, any comments or questions?
First of all, I want to thank you for your time, that you're donating, because you, this doesn't relieve you from your responsibilities and your regular job. In addition to your responsibilities to your department and to your good work, we really appreciate it, because, you know, we do not have an increase in health insurance premiums come January, thanks to the wellness that employees have taken upon themselves. Some of it's just luck, too. But we do think that the employees are taking an increasing responsibility for, and taking wellness seriously. You know, because we all have more and more skin in the game when it comes to the cost of healthcare and taking steps to not just be healthy for the goodness that brings our quality of life, but also, it's, it's costly. And by taking responsibility and being committed to wellness, it's helped all of us reduce and not have any increase in those premiums, thank goodness. I mean, everybody I've talked to has been hit by heavy-duty premium increases, and they, they just wonder, how'd you do it? Well, we did it by everyone in the organization, doing everything in their power. Sometimes it's out of your power, out of your hands, because of the genes that you were born with. But I just want to thank you for that and your commitment to the wellness for county employees. Not having a premium increase is just unbelievable in this era. We want to thank you for that, and going forward, now we're going to continue to do that, and dare I say, maybe even one day have a reduction. And as we're making, making improvements and, and having a greater participation in wellness, and let's hope this Marquee program, you know, is more user-friendly. But I guess I, the question I have may be more directed at Kim, and I probably should have just asked you by walking down the hall, but these computer problems have done, are, is that under control? Is that something that's really behind us? We don't want another glitch popping up during the launch with something new?
It's under control, and under control enough that Dunn is supplying on their website. That's the new platform for the open enrollment that was mentioned.
Yeah.
For two weeks, so it's been ironed out. It was an extremely painful four months, the beginning of the year, but Kathy has assured us it won't happen again in her lifetime, she's not going to switch companies. Because it was very stressful on her staff, yes.
That wasn't limited to just the wellness, that was.
It was the whole Dunn side, yeah.
Yeah, I had problems, didn't everybody have problems?
I'm a different plan, but same thing. If you buy, if you bought the bait and you went from traditional to high deductible, I think the first couple of times, my claim got bounced back. Once, my fault, because I gave them the wrong card. But the other time is they hadn't, their system didn't have it up to date, and we had a different, a different employee number. It was, yeah, it was.
It was painful, very painful.
But I've not had any problems the last six months.
Directly learning.
Question I have, Kim, is, we are still under contract with Reed. We need to have some, when, we want to continue with the platform we're on, even though our contract with Reed will have to be somehow terminated and then reinstituted.
Well, I think, wasn't there two, I mean, either we pause it or terminate it and go directly with Redeem Well, but I think Reed communicated to you, they might be able to continue their relationship with the Redeem Well.
Well.
And we'd still be under contract with them.
I thought we were terminating Redeem Well and going with Marquee.
We're not, Reed is, not us.
Reed is, okay.
Our contract is with Reed.
Yes.
Each contract is with the platform provider.
Yes.
Okay.
But I guess I want to take through that, because one thing I do want to avoid, we did determine that Trey.
Toon.
Twan, was, was an employee at Reed, and so we have that non-solicitation provision in our contract with Reed. So if we're going to have any relationship with him, it would have to be his company, which is the owner of the platform. They did acknowledge it was his platform, they didn't dispute that.
And Reed is looking into continuing that relationship in some fashion until the end of this year, so that we can stay on that same platform?
So we, conceptually, was everybody looking at October 1 to be a, a kind of a decision.
Continuation of the contract, but in the platform.
Okay.
And we don't think that's a part of the essentials.
That's what Reed proposed. This group would, would prefer to stay on the same platform until the end of December, at which point we would switch in January.
So at minimum, we're going to enter a contract.
Yes, and they're, they're looking into that, the legal aspects, as well as the management of the.
So, so we're kind of are under a time crunch, because that platform's going down September 30th, and we'll be gone. And our group didn't want to have to see that happen, that we're going to have a lapse in.
Today's September the 6th.
I know, but you know how, we were on very slow at times.
We can, we can work through this. First, we have to get feedback from Reed on what they can do. And, and once we have that, then we'll decide what we need to do. Okay?
One, one of the things I just thought of as you folks were talking about, the legal aspect, is right now Reed, I believe, holds the records as to who has earned what year-to-date.
Correct.
We need to make sure that regardless of whether Reed manages Redeem Well with a subcontract, or whether we go strictly to Redeem Well, that we don't lose that information, or else that's a lot of more frustration for us.
Absolutely. All right, anything else? Thank you all very much for coming, and appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks, thank you.
Keep you posted. Okay, Mary Ann, proclamation in celebration of Governor Oliver P. Morton.
Yes, I gave most of you a draft. I've enjoyed getting to know our war governor in these last few weeks a little bit better. The event is at the Centerville Methodist Church Saturday. It's open to the public, if anyone wants to come. There's a, like a midday luncheon, a little birthday cake and that sort of thing. And they have asked me to present the, or the commissioner, I think, since Centerville's in District 2.
You should do it, absolutely.
Yeah, you did Takers Town, so I'll do Centerville, and next time there's a Richmond proclamation, we'll put Brad in service for that. But the, the event, I think, is lovely, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable proclamation. You can read it, I don't think I need to read it aloud. But I certainly learned a lot of things in this research, and Jim Rush from tourism gave me some details, but as I was reading, I was struck by something I've never known about this governor, and that is, in 1860, he was elected lieutenant governor. But our seatless governor at the time, Henry Lane, was actually running for senate at the time. And he stepped down after two days as governor to take, to be sworn in to the US Senate. And so Lieutenant Governor Oliver P. Morton was lieutenant governor for two days, and then he was sworn in as governor. Quite a, quite an interesting way to be, become the 14th governor of the state of Indiana. But he was re-elected in 1864 in his own right, after some tumultuous years during the Civil War. It was interesting to learn just how close he and Abraham Lincoln were, because they were very like-minded in matters of restoring the Union and the end of slavery. He was quite a progressive thinker in terms of human rights, and especially on keeping the Union solidified, which was, you know, a pretty controversial issue in places like old Southern Indiana. So he was quite an accomplished man, considering the fact that he was orphaned at a very young age. Both his parents died, and he was just a very small boy.
Well, with that, I will make a motion that we approve this proclamation in celebration of Governor Oliver P. Morton's 200th birthday.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Shall we sign in blue or black?
I think I have both, so.
Oh, my blue just ran out.
Do you want blue? I got blue right here.
Okay, and.
Brad is not here today, so.
I hate to leave it blank.
Yeah, I don't believe he'll be here by Saturday.
I think he'll be back, because I can see how that meeting tomorrow, maybe?
I'll check with him. I'll check with him.
Maybe if you're going to check with him, maybe he could give you permission to have his signature.
We don't have a stamp, do we?
Not for him.
No. How's, how's your, your pseudo-Brad signature? We'll have to have Steve do it then. I don't know, is that, is that illegal in any way, shape, or form?
I think in ceremonial matters, when we know he was in favor of this proclamation.
Governor doesn't say a word.
Governor Morton?
Yeah.
Probably not. Okay, I'll, after the meeting, I'll try to get in touch with you about that.
You know, in the past, we have made a second copy of those in a black folder instead of those costly plaques, which I did put on your desk, Bob, put one of those wooden plaques. But we have black folders that those look nice in. Could you make a second one that I'll sign before I read? To give to the organization's individual who engineered the proclamation.
Who's, who's?
Jim Rush.
Organized, okay, okay.
I, I think Jim would kind of like to have one for himself, but I'd rather not find another plaque.
That is fine, that is fine. Moving on, the Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Yes.
We've got that from EMA, and they shared that with us electronically, as I remember. Are we, is there any timetable on getting that done that you recall about? I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't urgent, was it?
I'm not for sure. I know he said that he was wanting it to be on this week's agenda, even, because he was wanting to put it on next week's, since he'd be here next week.
Right.
So I don't know how big of an urgency it is.
Is this for EMA or Health Department?
It's for the Health Department, of Danburg.
I'm sorry, I thought this was for, for EMA. This is an Emergency Preparedness Grant, and I just heard from, just heard from Christine and from, what's her name? Clinical Director? Becca, thank you.
Oh.
That, that because we weren't able to respond in a timely way on one of the previous grants, that they had lost the funding from the state.
Was that our fault?
No, it was an issue of working out the job description.
Which, which grant was it?
Trying to recall.
It's the one that we passed this morning, the jobs that we passed opposed.
Don't think so.
Yeah, because we discussed it at the, at the meeting.
Okay, well, Christine didn't think so, at any rate.
The Harm Reduction Grant, is that?
No, it's a different one.
Safety?
No, it's the one that was currently out of Muncie, it was a regional grant.
See, Becca's in the hall.
Doesn't matter. At any rate, what, what is this grant about? Why don't you ask Becca if she can speak to this grant? Thank you.
It's $25,000. Emergency Preparedness, boy, that's one point tight.
Yeah, it's got a big biplane drone, some equipment, cell phone.
You can read this?
A Bible. Hi, Becca.
Hello.
Can you speak to the Emergency Preparedness Grant application?
I'm sure that I can, it depends on what the questions are, I guess. You can't read it.
What is it, when is it due, and what are we asking for?
Um, I know that it's $25,000. I know that it's extremely strict on what they can spend it on. I don't know when it's due. I think that it's fairly close in time range, yeah.
So is this the grant that would allow for a active shooter simulation?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm all in favor of that, because I think we need to do that.
Reader-friendly.
Yeah, it's sometimes.
Do you want to borrow Steve's black vocals?
I think that black paint is the same thing.
Oh, is it bigger?
Yeah.
So we had drone, she talked about, Christine told me about a drone not too long ago.
And so, is this starting the process of, of allowing it to be applied for? Has it already been applied for?
It's not been applied for yet, but it's one that we do every year.
Okay, so it's a renewal, it is not for, for staff? It's for equipment, apparently a drone, and the ability to pay for an active shooter simulation and training? Is anything else listed in the budget?
Yeah, so there's some smaller items, like ink and toner, some storage equipment. There's some $2,000 for marketing materials on here.
Okay.
Cell phones probably for the employees that are involved.
Okay.
And there's the, yeah, exercise training, so it says, that's it.
So it doesn't, and is it reimbursement, or is it cash?
Should say on the front page.
That would get to whether it's.
I think he said that it was the cash, because that's what I'm questioning him about.
And is this for, uh, Emergency Preparedness for county? And is this for uh emergency preparedness for county readiness or other organizations in the county?
Uh, so yeah, so it's our ability to be able to respond to emergencies as a county, as a health department and, yeah.
Okay, so it's to have the health department employees readiness upgraded, okay. Not just service the county's security.
Right, right, yep.
So I don't, I don't see anything or hear anything from that grant that would mean that the council would also have to approve it before it could be some uh.
It's a cash upfront, it's no personnel, it's no?
No personnel, he doesn't have the grant type checked here.
Who's applying?
Um, Dan Burke is our supervisor.
Oh, Dan Burke, okay.
For the emergency preparedness program. Yeah, I don't want to say one way or another cause I'm not sure.
Is there interface with law enforcement?
Yeah, so the idea with the, with the active shooter is to kind of coordinate everyone together and make it one day where we're all kind of working together on it.
Because there's really no capital at risk here, I think there's no reason to impede your progress toward meeting a deadline, even though we're not sure how short fused it is. I move that we grant permission for you to go forward with this grant application.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So let's see if we can sign that and uh.
Sorry, I didn't have more information for you.
And um, so this is just the president's signature.
Yep. Commissioners approve and president signs and you're off to the races and hopefully it's not one of those thirty-minute turnarounds from the state.
These timelines have been kind of crazy.
Do, you need to keep a copy of this for our files? Okay.
I can just leave it and come back and get it premiered and have Christine.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to defer the discussion on the holiday schedule until Brad's here, so I'll forgive us and take a look at that.
No rush.
Let's, let's turn to a discussion of this morning's presentation to council and approval of the strategic investment plan for the help program. I did have a chance to talk to Brad and he is fine with us going ahead.
Okay.
And taking a vote today in his absence and we do want to, we've set some meeting times for early next week to start meeting with the town councils that are participating, so we'll open it up for discussion and/or a motion to approve the strategic investment plan for the help program.
Yeah, having seen the presentation that, which was excellent this morning, I just want to praise all the hard work that you Jeff and the roughly hundred people on the pathways and the court committee and, and others and of course Beth Fields and her dedication to this effort certainly was presented this morning at council. I think most, most of the questions were addressed. I'm just concerned about going forward that the funding that the SIP allows does not go far enough to bring projects across the goal line. But there are ARPA funds that remain in our grasp.
Uncommitted.
Right. You know, what a shame to, to build a foundation but to never have, never have the building built, you know. So of course, you know, that's just perfectly reasonable because the SIP was limited in the funds at its disposal, but I, I would hope that we very soon will be able to really move forward so projects cannot just be kicked off, but really plans through fruition and actually be completed.
And I was, I was very gratified to hear the council acknowledged several times that this has to be a team effort, the council and commissioners need to get together on, on determining where we're going to invest those ARPA dollars. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction. We've got, we've got a whole group of communities working together and, and pulling in harness in the same direction and I think we can accelerate that and continue. So I'm very, very pleased with where we're at right now. As I said this morning, we've just begun. The hard work starts now. We've accomplished the easy part of it, now the hard work begins. So would you like to make a motion? You want me to?
Oh, I'd be happy to approve, I move that we approve the SIP.
As presented.
As presented by the core committee, I think the core team was the presenter ultimately and move forward with the execution of that plan.
Second. I'll second that motion. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I apologize if you had preferred to make the motion. Did you want to make the motion? You have a few years invested in it.
I, I do, but I'll have a few, a few more years invested.
You're not done yet.
Before it's all, before it's all.
Do the projects that are going to be repaired from construction, Davis Paying Services?
They should not, because they're all under the threshold that would require that with
Threshold is pretty low.
It's, it's a million dollars, but.
They modify it?
Yeah.
Okay, modified threshold. It used to be two thousand.
That was unreasonable.
And, and you know, as they relaxed the ARPA funding so that, so that ten million dollars could be claimed as lost revenue and it expanded what we can do with the funds to virtually anything that's legal, it's, it relaxed a lot of those, those issues. So moving forward, we'll, we'll keep on top of, of anything that comes up, but I think it's important that we start moving forward. So we're, we're in good shape right now and hopefully we'll stay on track.
There was just one thing that I can clarify. In the SIP, it says that Cambridge City owns the Gateway Industrial Park.
If it did, that was in the air.
We didn't give that away in this project, project.
Cambridge City owns the water system in the industrial, the industrial park.
But it says they own the park. We could get that corrected before it gets chiseled in stone, I appreciate.
Well, it's, it's not a legal document, so it doesn't transfer ownership. Okay. Anything else? If not, why don't we go ahead with claims?
Move for approval of following claims. The payment of riverboat sharing distribution dated August thirty-first. We're still playing catch-up from not having a fifth Wednesday meeting. Jury duty claims, Indian American Water claims and assorted other general claims dated August thirtieth. Regular claims of September sixth along with Center Point jury claims and monthly contracts dated today. Dunn Flex Distribution and garnishments dated September eighth. Federal Tax and Retirement Distribution dated September eighth and payroll dated September eighth. Move for approval, all be gone.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I would also like to move for approval of minutes, empty minutes from both August sixteenth and August twenty-third.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else that needs to be approved?
That's all I can find.
Okay. Bobby, oh, go ahead.
We, that, I don't want to take action on holidays.
I don't either, yeah.
But it doesn't mean we can't at least start thinking about it.
We can if you would like to.
Want you to start thinking about Women's Equality Day as a paid holiday for.
In exchange for?
I don't know, Christmas?
I, I would have trouble seconding that.
I just, this is just a thinking point, not a, not a talking point.
Okay.
I think it has been an unsung holiday. I mean, we celebrate a lot of different holidays in this country.
We do.
But for the majority of our citizenry to finally get the right to vote and not to have a holiday celebrating that August twenty-sixth, Women's Equality Day that has been designated by Congress, the name of the date of August twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty, when a majority of our citizenry finally, after nearly a hundred-year struggle, were granted the franchise. It seems that there needs to be some designated celebration of Women's Equality Day, so I just want you to think about adding August twenty-sixth, even though it does come awfully close to Labor Day.
It does come very close.
Very close, that's, that's its only downside, I think.
I, I have no issue in considering that. I just feel that when we give up to four weeks of, of paid vacation, we give, you know, about six days of, of sick leave and three or four days of personal days and twelve or thirteen paid holidays, that's a, a lot of time off with pay. And I think historically, we've had twelve or thirteen paid holidays for several years. If, if we are to add one, I think we need to consider taking one away. Not sure what that would be. We can sit down with, with the actual list that Bobby sent out a week or two ago and, and give that some thought. We also, I think, want to consider whether it makes sense to take the, the whole day or half a day off next spring when the, the full eclipse happens. So, you know, there's some food for thought and let's consider that and we can have some further discussion next, next Wednesday, but Brad's back and.
And there are other ways of doing it too. I mean, we, we as Wayne County could celebrate Labor Day in conjunction with Women's Equality Day by intername only.
Yeah.
We would not have to have an additional paid vacation day, but to just acknowledge, just as Juneteenth certainly raised awareness of that momentous day.
Absolutely.
You know, it, it, it could just raise the awareness of the importance of days in history. Also, just as, you know, commemorating Dr. Mary Thomas, who was rich in, it really is doing research in that whole period of our history. She and Oliver P. Morton were friends and colleagues about the same age and I just imagine the conversations those two intellects must have had.
Tell you, Dr. Thomas' historical marker on the bridge looks really nice.
Oh, good, good.
Kudos on that. That was, that was well designed and the dedication ceremony was nice. Could have been a little, a little less hot and humid, but.
Or more hydrated in case of some elderly people.
But, but it was, it was a very nice, nice ceremony and, and the historic marker looks really good.
Thank you. I, I wish those were not so time-consuming and costly, but we were able to get enough grants and donations that it was well done. But it also has raised my awareness that I think the county needs to recognize Oliver P. Morton. You know, to not have a road in his name, a bridge, nothing, cause he was, you know, of all the people from Wayne County to, I mean, he was quite a leader in the senate. You know, his, his gubernatorial achievements were momentous.
To say the least.
I think we ought to consider having something, some infrastructure in his name.
Well, and I think one thing we should consider having is give him two additional fingers on his statue.
Right, and that's underway. That's right.
And maybe have a rededication of his statue when we get it, when we get it repaired. So I think that would be a good starting point, but a great point as well taken.
But I think.
Steve, I've, I've seen your, your artwork and I think you probably need to find someone else. Maybe Sophie could, you bring in the Play-Doh and Sophie could sculpt it for us.
Renaming a road is pretty costly, you know, to GPS and it causes confusion, that sort of thing, but a, a bridge is not a costly piece of infrastructure to name.
I, I have no objection to giving that some consideration.
Yeah, let's, let's be thinking about that. And it's just like naming a holiday. We as a body can name a holiday and call attention to people, places, events, well within a budget. The budget that you and I could both agree on is affordable.
Fair enough.
Anyway, Oliver P. Morton, I just want to think about it and as we're approaching.
You know, you have the ability with ordinance to do honorary names too and that, you know, that lesson was learned when the seatless temp, renamed Williams were probably.
As so many named.
Yeah, and, you know, and it's, you see a lot down Cincinnati of P. Rose, where some of them are just honorary.
Sure. That's a good point.
But for us not to honor the governor from Centerville, I think it's overdue.
Bobby, what else do you have for us?
I've got amendment number ten for Don and Associates where we have upped the limit on the eyeglass that needs to be signed off.
We don't need action on this, we've already approved it, we just need to sign it.
It's just an addendum to the plan document.
Can we five it just two signatures so I can date this today?
I think you can date it today and we'll just have Brad sign it when he's back. As all three of us approved.
Well, I can't tell you the number of organizations I've talked to, well, not a whole lot, but they can't believe we didn't have a premium increase on our insurance. I'm on enough boards that they, they're looking at twenty, twenty-five percent increases and it's mostly prescriptions that are doing it to them.
It's going to be pharmacy driven, a lot of that is.
Yeah, pharmacy.
Anything else, Bobby?
A lot.
Okay. Steve, nothing else? Ron, nothing else?
I had a conversation with the auditor and people trying to work a solution to human cities or.
Okay, good, good.
Kind of misogynist first response, I believe.
Okay. Keep this posted. If there's nothing else?
But our Women's Equality Day, we, to save money on this, I know paid holidays, we wouldn't have to give the entire workforce a paid holiday.
Just women.
I second that.
Consider that, consider that.
You're not allowed to do that.
Since we're generally paid seventy-three cents on the dollar, you know.
Well, that begs a whole lot of questions that I don't even want to get into.
Apparently, there's nothing else.
Levity.
That was very little, yes. I'm sure that the other part of our workforce would have been.
They got to vote a hundred and fifty years before we.
You know, most of our workforce, believe it or not, is far, far. You know, most of our workforce, believe it or not, is far, far less than 150 years old.
Hey, reparations, man.
All right. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much. It's been a good, productive, busy day. We are adjourned.